Okay, we are going to begin our meeting. It's on or about 7:30 on Monday, February 6th. We begin at 7:30. We're going to begin. A couple of things, the mayor has reminded me to remind everybody, please turn off your cell phones so they won't be ringing during the meeting, either silent or turn them off, please. Establishing a quorum. We obviously have a quorum. All members of council are present tonight. First item of business is disposition of several sets of minutes for the regular session of council which was held on December 19th, 2011. The regular session held on January 3rd, 2012, and the regular session of council held on January 17th, 2012. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second? Call those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have several communications. First of all, I'm just going to say that we have a liquor permit transfer from the Athens Wine Company doing business as Bellavino's Carryout to Willie Mae LLC doing business as Bellavino's at the same address, 22 West Simpson. If anybody has any concerns or questions about this transfer, our clerk Debbie Walker needs to hear from you by the 5th of March. Otherwise, we will let this go with no comment. I think we have, from Ms. Traybold, some nominations.
Yes, I would like to move that we appoint. There are some vacancies on a couple of boards. One is the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the mayor has forwarded this note to us that he would like to see Rick Mayer appointed to the BCA. Let me do these one at a time.
Yes, please.
So, we need to vote on that? Do we need a second?
Second.
Mayor?
This is former chief mayor. He approached me. He still wants to be doing some community service. He's actually going to be filling your position, of course. I guess not really, because I think Lisa Carson's moved into the regular chair, and he's going to be acting as an alternate prior for the duration of the term, which I think is the year. I think it's from till 2013. We may want to re-up him at that point and see what happens, but that's further down the line. And, of course, I think most of you know him.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of appointing Rick Mayer to the Board of Zoning Appeals, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, opposition? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We assume you're watching.
Mr. Mayor has also, meaning Mr. Mayor, the mayor, has also put forward the appointment of Tom Walker and Lori Kenny to the Disabilities Commission to fill two vacant spots. Is there anything you'd?
Tom Walker is Professor Walker of Sociology. He's a political science, rather, emeritus. He's also part of the, I think he's, works for the Athens Chapter NAMI, National Alliance for Mental Illness. He's been attending the meetings for at least six months, almost a year. He's interested in what's going on there. So, there are some point terms that were sunsetting, expiring, so I wanted to put him in place for that, since he has the interest.
Laura Kenny?
Laura Kenny is, let's see, she's for the, also of the Athens Chapter, National Alliance for Mental Illness. She's the office manager for that. She's been doing that for a while. She's also been an intern and receptionist at Hunter Law Offices. How about that? She's been attending regularly as well. We've got a few members that had an interest, but there wasn't any openings on the Disabilities Commission at the time. And again, one of the requests is that usually there's a liaison with council that attends these meetings, at least coordinates with the meetings, and I don't know if anybody stepped forward on that or not. Member Sands used to be with, working with him, a liaison, but now that he's present, it's not so much so.
So, are you looking for someone from council?
Yes.
Yes, please. That's just what I was getting ready to say. I think we've mentioned this before, but if somebody would be interested in attending these meetings as a representative of council, the Disabilities Commission is a pretty active commission, and some very interested people who serve on it. So, I think you'd feel good about going to those meetings. So, let the mayor know if he'd like to have that position. I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Michelle, go ahead.
No, that's fine. So, I'll restate this. I would like to move that we appoint Tom Walker and Laura Kenny to the Disabilities Commission. Second.
All those in favor of those appointments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have reports and commissions from other elected officials. Mayor Wile?
Oh, okay, my turn. Let's see, a couple of things. Of course, tomorrow is the town hall meeting. It's at 6:30 at the community center. It's pretty much open to mic for about three minutes, anybody can speak on any issues that concern the city. We're always open to more information, and the intent, of course, is that we would either reply then in a short, abbreviated format, or reply in the June town hall meeting. I also would mention that the Joint Police Advisory Council is also meeting on Thursday, 6:30 as well, at the community center. This will be the kickoff, the coordination between the Ohio University Police Department and our police department to improve communication. I have about four appointees on that right now. I think I need four more. So, we're always looking for citizens to get involved in that as well.
Citizens as well?
Yes. And I think that's all I have, unless you have anything else. I've, it's fallen through the cracks. Nope? Okay.
Service Safety Director Mosley, did you have something?
I do not.
Okay. Auditor Hep.
I just want to let council know that two weeks from tonight, I plan to give my annual report for the auditor's office. Just give you a little warning.
Thank you. Thank you. Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have given each of you a copy of my fourth quarter report that includes the end-of-the-year interest income report and the last three months of bank transactions. If you look at the interest report, which is on one of the back pages, you'll see there are total interest income for the years, $192,265 against the projected $123,590. So, we did a little better than expected. Questions?
Are you seeing that, obviously, this is a little better than expected, so are you seeing an increase?
I'm not seeing any changes.
Can we raise our expectations?
No.
No?
No, I think, I think as the investments that, as they mature this year, will be a little challenged in finding equal rates, although they're not too bad right now. So, we may be able to stay about the same pace.
Any other questions for the treasurer? Law Director Patrick Lang?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, it's hard to believe, when I think about it, that it was 16 years ago, almost half a lifetime ago, when I first spoke in this room, and I did it from right over there at the podium where members of the public can come up to address the council. And for those who were around back then or paying attention back then, you may also remember that Paul Wile was somebody who was also very frequently addressing members of the council during the time at the end of council meetings, which are set aside specifically for members of the public to speak to council on a member, on a subject of their own choosing. Now, you know, so having said that, it is clearly, it's not only my favorite part of the meetings, but it is one of the most important parts, I think, in a democracy, too. I mean, it really is the very expression of the First Amendment, freedom of speech, that is, that we all enjoy as Americans. Having said all of that, now, and one of the reasons that we allow, that, you know, council typically does not speak during those portions is because, you know, we've got the whole rest of the meeting, for those of us up here to be talking. That's the time of the meeting when we're here to listen. So, with that in mind, several council members have asked me to make a public statement tonight on an issue which has been brought up several times by a very committed handful of individuals during the public portion comment of the city council meetings. Now, I should preface this by saying this is not the first time that I've spoken on this issue, either to individuals, or I believe a few years ago, I was even quoted in the press, talking about this issue. But just to make it clear, to clear up any confusion, allow me to state, on behalf of the entire city government here, as clearly and unambiguously as I can, that the state of Ohio absolutely requires the fluoridation of public water systems for cities over 5,000 people. Now, this is, you know, I'm not a scientist, and I don't pretend to understand the science behind it, or to take a position as to whether fluoride is good or bad, on balance, but I am a lawyer, and so if you'll indulge me, I'd like to just read a few brief passages from the Ohio Revised Code on the topic. Ohio Revised Code 6109.20 is titled, "Fluoride to be added to public water system." And it says, "If the natural fluoride content of supplied water of a public water system is less than 8 tenths milligram per liter of water, fluoride shall be added to such water to maintain fluoride content of not less than 8 tenths milligrams per liter of water, nor more than 1 and 3 tenths milligrams per liter of water." Now, it has been pointed out before, correctly, by certain members of the public, that there was a time when Ohio law provided that municipalities could opt out of this requirement. That is no longer, that was true. It is no longer the case. Now, it is no longer part of the law, and so it is true that for years Athens did not fluoridate their water in accordance with that law, but then, beginning in the 1990s, began to add fluoride to the water at a time, and again, now that the provision that allowed the opt-out no longer exists. But I will just cite a couple other areas in the law that do still currently exist on this topic, including Revised Code 6109.11, which allows any individual in the city to file a complaint with the Environmental Protection Agency if they believe that fluoride is not being maintained to the levels required by state law. 6109-14 states that the director of the EPA, if they receive such a complaint, that they should, after having conducted an investigation, that if they find there's good cause that fluoride is not being maintained in the manner prescribed by state law, that they will set a hearing. They will call the mayor to testify at this hearing, and he can come and make any arguments that he may have, but at the end of the day, if the city is not fluoridating to the levels that is required by state law, then the director will issue an order of compliance. In the event that the city were to not be in compliance with that order, then 6109-16 provides that the director of the EPA can go to a court of competent jurisdiction and issue, and to have a written mandamus issued to the city ordering compliance with the state director of the EPA. In addition to that, there are civil fines and penalties which can be assessed against the city, and also, I'll let you guess at the end of all of this, who would be on the hook for paying the attorney's fees for having brought this, all of this in the first place. So, I just state this to try to clear up any misconceptions about this, and again, you know, and it's been pointed out, you know, certainly, as people have a right to point out, there are other cities across the country which have chosen to, that have fluoridated, or they've decided not to fluoridate, you know, and that's fine. A lot of cities across the country aren't subject to Ohio law. Now, I don't know what the Florida law is in this area, and for our purposes, it doesn't really matter. Another example that gets thrown around, or brought up a lot, or thrown around, gets brought to our attention, is that of Yellow Springs, Ohio, which has decided not to fluoridate. Yellow Springs is not a city. Yellow Springs has a population of under 5,000, and so all the provisions of the law that I was reading about the fluoridation, they don't apply to Yellow Springs. They do apply to the city of Athens. So, you know, again, we may like it, or we may not like it, but I can certainly tell you without any equivocation that this is a requirement of state law, and that, you know, and for those who are unhappy about this and believe that this is not the correct policy, you listen, I'm certainly not saying, "Don't speak your mind on this," and you can come and speak to every council meeting from here, you know, until eternity, if you like. And, you know, I encourage you and any citizens of Athens to come and take full advantage of that time of council meetings, but just understand that, you know, the law is what it is, and if you don't like the law, then I would respectfully encourage you to contact your state legislators and try to urge them to change it. That's all I've got. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, law director. Okay, we're going to proceed, yes?
Do we have to make a motion?
Number Nysley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the auditor's monthly reports for December.
Second? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the auditor's report for December 2012, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Thank you. The report has been accepted. What I started to say is, I heard the mayor speaking to the audience before the meeting began about ordinances needing three readings. We are about to begin our consideration of what's on our agenda. We're starting with the second reading. All the third reading ordinances have already been dealt with, and in second reading, we often don't have much discussion. So, I'll read the ordinance, and there may be some discussion, but more often than not, there won't be. Then we'll move into ordinances for first reading, where council members will introduce the ordinance, and there will be widespread discussion. So, ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 0112. Ordinance authorizing the service safety director to submit an application and enter into contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for safe routes to school funds, introduced by Councilmember Gosney. Ordinance 0412. An ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into an LPA, state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, again, ODOT, for scaling maintenance to the rock face adjacent to U.S. Route 50 near State Route 550, I'm sorry, State Route 33 near State Route 550 within the corporation boundary.
Thanks, Mr. President. I would like to move that we consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules.
Second. All those in favor of suspending the rules at this time, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Member Gosney?
The purpose of this suspension is that Ohio Department of Transportation needs to begin this work, I don't know the exact timeline, but before we have a chance to read this for the third time, and so we need to have an agreement in place with them in order to allow them to begin this work in a timely fashion.
Any questions or concerns about this?
And then, I would like to move adoption of ordinance 412.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of adopting ordinance 412, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. This ordinance has been adopted, then. Ordinance 612. An ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Union to State on Saturday, May 19th, 2012, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the International Street Fair, again, introduced by Councilmember Gosney. Ordinance 712. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 11 Business Regulations to include Chapter 11.1 Sweepstakes/Internet Cafes, introduced by number four. Ordinance 812. An ordinance authorizing design construction and construction engineering of the North Court Street Infrastructure Improvements Project 259, introduced by Councilmember Butler. Ordinance 1512. An ordinance providing for the issuance of $270,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing the notes issued for the purpose of paying part of the costs of acquiring and installing energy conservation improvements at the city's community center and declaring an emergency, introduced by member Nysley. Okay? And here we have, we go into ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 1612. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into revolving loan fund administration agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Development and declaring an emergency. Member four.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is authorizing that we need a suspension. Okay. I would, I move that we suspend this ordinance.
Second? Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 1612, say aye.
Aye.
Again. The rules have been suspended.
I move that we adopt 1612.
Second.
1612 is the agreement that we have with the state to enter into negotiate, to contract with the revolving loan fund administration, and this is how we, when we get CDDGs, the city's community block development grants and economic development funding, that this is how we administer the funds with the state. It's for a three-year period, beginning soon, I would expect. That's why we have suspension.
The last agreement terminated December 31st, 2011. So, we're one month into, and I think last time we ran a little late, last three years ago. This is our economic revolving loan fund. I think we have about $200,000 in the revolving loan fund at this point. We don't have a lot of loans out. I will, after this is done, I will also probably be coming back to you for authorization of the administration. This is the agreement between the Department of Development, Ohio Department of Development, but I've been informed that the administration of it, which is through the Enterprise Development Corporation, is not going to be continued, so I'll probably have to be out there looking for somebody else to administer it. I don't think we have the, internally, have the wherewithal to look at the finances. I'm having some conversations with the Buckeye Hills, Hocking Valley Development District. They manage some revolving loan funds. The reason why I mention this, I'll probably have to come back to you for authorization to enter into that contract as well, so I'm giving you a heads up.
Good. Thank you.
Again, it's a good, useful tool when it's, when we get a chance to use it.
And it's a readily develop, available fund for us, so we can move quickly on projects also.
Not as quick as most businesses would like. There are hoops you have to jump because it is government money, and it's intended as gap financing for businesses that have a certain amount of money already in. They've got some for the bank, but they need to fill, as I say, a gap. Okay?
Can one of you discuss quickly what revolving loan, revolving part of that fund means?
Well, essentially, what happens, we loan the money out. When we get it back, it goes back into the pool, and we use it again as much as possible. There is an administration cost usually. I think the max is at a 20% if you choose to go that route. If that money is all consumed up, then we go for economic development money, which is fresh money coming in, and that would end up in a revolving loan fund as well. Last year, we were, had one that was evolving for the nursing home down on Columbus Road. They refused to initiate the loan at that point, but at that point, they were talking about 200 of our revolving loan and 500 of new money, which means if it had gone through, we would have ended up with 700, or a little bit under 700. And again, it's to help, it's one of those tools for economic development that we have in our chest. The county has a revolving loan fund as well, so there are several out there. Small business loans is another, is another form of a small business loan. That's a different structure entirely. We don't do that though.
Thank you. Okay, so we have, we've suspended the rules on ordinance 1612, and we have a motion to accept it? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor of accepting ordinance 1612, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. This has been passed. Ordinance 1712. An ordinance granting renewal of a revocable license to Ohio University for use of a portion of the city right-of-way on West Union Street, on West Union Street and Congress Streets to provide a handicap ramp and utility corridor to service Bronley Hall, again, introduced by number four.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request that this time that we table this ordinance, because there's ongoing negotiations about the need for this, or maybe some other tool that would be better.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling this ordinance at this time, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign? Okay. Ordinance 1812. An ordinance granting renewal of a revocable license to the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau, 667 East State Street, to allow the placement of signs on the city right-of-way.
Thank you, Mr. President. This and several of the following ordinances are some, work that we do for such things that are used on the city right-of-way, such as signs, maybe other, putting garbage cans, these sort of things, where it's our right to say yes or no, and we make sure that it's, that it's maintained, insurance if it needs to have insurance. This particular one, most revocable licenses are for 10 years. This is a renewal, some of them are renewals. This is for the Athens County Convention and Visitor Bureau to put their sign on our city right-of-way. Pretty straightforward. We'll do lots of these. There's a picture of it in your packet. We do a lot of these during the year.
And here comes another one. Ordinance 1912. An ordinance granting renewal of a revocable license to Glenn Knudsen, owner, 2,224 Columbus Road, to allow the placement of a sign on the city right-of-way.
Once, once again, this is a renewal, and it's also to place a sign on the city right-of-way, and it's also for 10 years. Renewal means that these have already been in place for however many years that they've already in place, probably 10 to 20 years, since that's a 10-year period that we renew them.
Okay. And again, ordinance 2012. An ordinance granting renewal of a revocable license to the Dairy Barn, 8,000 Dairy Lane, to allow the placement of a sign on the city right-of-way.
We all know and love this sign, so everybody who goes down Richland Avenue knows this one well. It's a renewal, once again, for another 10 years.
We might note that this one is placed quite a ways away from the Dairy Barn, so that it catches people's attention going down Richland Avenue, as you point out. Ordinance 2112. An ordinance closing a portion of Union Street between Congress and Court on Saturday, June 30th, 2012, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for Ohio Brew Week, introduced by Councilmember Gosney.
Thank you, Mr. President. We heard from Dan Gates at our committee meeting last week about Ohio Brew Week this upcoming summer. It's an event that many of us look forward to, and it seems to get bigger and better every year. This year, the date is changing. It's being moved due to the semester switch at the university to not conflict with activities related to that, and so it will be separate from Boogie on the Bricks, which it's usually a part of, but June 30th is the date this year of the Brew Week festivities on Court Street where we close, or Union Street where we close a portion of the street there.
Ordinance 2212. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Athens, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the Hocking Conservancy District for an easement with the, for the existing bicycle path, introduced by Councilmember Gosney.
Thank you. This ordinance is simply to allow the bicycle and pedestrian path, known as the bike path, to continue to be maintained and operated in the way that it is now. This is a permanent easement, so we won't, future councils will not be seeing another one of these, hopefully. And this is for a 20-foot right-of-way that is centered on the existing bike path, just to, it allows the city to use Hocking Conservancy District property for this purpose.
Can you, where is this, the bike path?
This is covering two large chunks of property. One of them is about one acre, and the other one is 7.6 acres. So, it's a good portion of the existing bike path that runs along the river.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Ordinance 2312. An ordinance accepting the donation of approximately .682 acres by Athens Health Realty LLC to provide a perpetual easement for the construction and maintenance of a sewer line and public highway and road purposes on the Columbus Circle Drive Access Road. Member Gosney?
Thank you, Mr. President. As it states in the title, this is another easement. This one is for the newly constructed and the currently being constructed Circle Drive Access Road on Columbus Road. This is for .6 acres of land, a little over .6 acres, that allows us to construct and maintain that road, as well as a sewer line. The next two ordinances are related to this, in that they also contain bits of property from adjoining landowners in order for us to construct and maintain that road. Now, the first one is from Athens Health Realty, healthcare center there. Now, the first one is from Athens Health Realty, healthcare center there.
Any questions, concerns? Okay. Ordinance twenty-four twelve, an ordinance accepting the donation of approximately point zero seven acres by Ann Cornwell and Michael Jinder to provide a perpetual easement for the Columbus Circle Drive Access Road. Member Gosnig.
Nothing to add here, just one of the three properties that are part of this Circle Access, Circle Drive Access Road construction.
I just want to say, we appreciate when people, citizens do this, because it does make it much easier so that we can maintain the sewer, especially the sewer and roads for us. So we appreciate the donation of easements.
Good point. Thank you. Ordinance twenty-five twelve, an ordinance accepting the donation of approximately point zero three acres by Parfit Properties LLC to provide an easement for construction and maintenance of the Columbus Circle Drive Access Road. Member Gosnig.
Thank you. This is the final piece of property that we're accepting here. It's, we've already been granted the right, this is a formal adoption of city council, this and the previous two properties, in order to continue with the second phase of this construction project.
Again, it's, we had to go through this because we're getting A R C money for our grant money for this, and it has to go, it took a while. Like, as I say, things that go through government at times do take some time. We had to make sure it was all properly assessed, is, you know, the survey had been done. Part of this is Appalachian Region Commission access road money, which is why we had to go through the hoops. Again, as member Fall mentioned, said that it's, it's good that we got some donations, and we thank the people, the property owners for that. This will give us the lower portion of Columbus Circle Drive, so we'll have a nice access for vehicles in both directions. Hopefully all will be an improvement in that area. So, took a while.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance twenty-six twelve, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for the Hickory Street waterline improvements, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. We discussed this in committee a couple weeks ago. This particular project is already approved on Hickory Street. Essentially, this is an update to the waterline. There is insufficient water lines there at the moment. We're going to improve them with the project. And there is cooperation with the developer who's willing to be, to pay up to twenty thousand dollars of the reimbursed, to reimburse the project. Again, this is appropriating thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Thank you.
Questions, concerns? Okay. Ordinance twenty-seven twelve, an ordinance amending the two thousand and twelve appropriation ordinance and authorizing inter-fund transfers. Member Nyslin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we consider this ordinance under suspension.
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. The rules have been suspended. Member Nyslin.
I move adoption of twenty-seven twelve.
Second.
Okay. And I'll briefly go through the details, some of which we covered in the committee meeting last week. In section one, we are appropriating several parcels of money, and so I'll explain them. The first one, fifteen hundred dollars is for the Community Development Block Grant Revolving Loan Fund. That's to cover administrative fees, fifteen hundred dollars. And then there are several appropriations, which we are recommending after discussion with the police chief. And these funds have a revenue stream but had no appropriation at the beginning of the year, and that would be twenty-five thousand dollars to the Law Enforcement Fund, two ninety-three, ten thousand dollars to the Law Enforcement Fund, two ninety-three, for capital purchases. The next section, we're appropriating a total of ten thousand dollars, which will be split out in two different accounts. And this is for a coin processor machine that we use for the coins that are brought in at the parking garage. And so five thousand dollars will go to the Capital Improvement Fund and five thousand to the Parking Garage Fund for the purchase of this piece of equipment. The next item has to do with Tax Incremental Financing Fund that we also discussed last week, and this is for the East State Street improvements. The revenue comes into the city two times a year, and right now, it's time for us to appropriate the funds in two parcels, to the School Fund, and that would be two hundred eighteen thousand five hundred dollars, and that's to cover the school share of the auditor's fees. And then the remaining two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that revenue will go to our Tax Incremental Financing Fund, five ninety-three, for transfer. We have a series of other transfers, seventeen hundred dollars of which is needed to go to the Tourism Fund. And what this does is pays our obligations to the Economic Development Council and to the Tourism Bureau as part of our annual contracts. And we receive a transient guest tax fund, and then we in turn appropriate that money to these two different projects for which we have contracts. At this point, what we're needing is seventeen hundred dollars to cover our obligations to these two organizations that we have contracts with. Then we have a series of accounts that will be closed, just a standard kind of accounting procedure, where you've got a little bit of money in an account. It's not, you know, it's not good to have it sitting there for a long period of time, so we're closing out several of these. One of them is a hundred and sixteen dollars and two cents to the Court Security Fund. Another will be a hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-five cents to the DUI Court Fund. One thousand forty-five dollars and eighty-three cents to the Parking Garage Debt Fund. And then four thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and fifty-four cents to the EPA Litigation Debt Fund. We recently were able to close out our final payment for that, so that's a nice one to be able to be closing that account. And then, at the very bottom, under section two of this ordinance, then we have a series of transfers that accomplish, if you'll notice these amounts, the seventeen hundred, the hundred and sixteen dollars and two cents, a hundred and six ninety-five, they cover the amounts that I had just previously mentioned. So seventeen hundred dollars will go from the General Fund to the Tourism Fund. A hundred and sixteen dollars and two cents will go from Court Security to the Judges' Court Computer Fund. The hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-five cents will go from the Municipal Drug Court Fund to the DUI Court Fund. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's our large amount of the Tax Incremental Financing Fund, that will go to the East State Street Debt Fund to pay off a portion of our loan for those improvements. Then a thousand forty-five dollars and eighty-three cents from the Parking Garage Debt Fund to the Parking Garage Fund. And the four thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and fifty-four cents from the EPA Litigation Debt Fund to the Water Fund.
Thank you. Made that all sound fun. And we have suspended the rules, and we have a motion to, to accept, and a second to that. So all those in favor of accepting ordinance twenty-seven twelve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This ordinance is accepted. Ordinance twenty-eight twelve, an ordinance declaring the parking meter coin processor no longer needed for a municipal purpose. Member Nyslin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we consider this ordinance under suspension.
Second.
All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
Okay.
And I move now that we consider approval of twenty-eight twelve.
Second.
And as described earlier, we were talking about a parking meter coin processor. The one that we have for the parking garage is nineteen years old and has stopped functioning. And so what we'll be doing with this ordinance, as we do with cars and other items that the city owns, we need to have an ordinance that allows the city then to get rid of this particular piece of equipment. The reason we're suspending it tonight is that we will be able to get credit for the coin processor. So we'd like to, since we need the new one, we'd like to get this done in a timely manner.
Okay. We've suspended the rules. We have a motion to accept and second. All those in favor of accepting ordinance twenty-eight twelve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay. This ordinance is passed. Thank you. We have a resolution for first reading. This resolution is a three-reading resolution. Resolution one twelve. Excuse me? Did I miss one? No, I don't have? Okay, I guess we have one that I've missed. Okay. Ordinance twenty-nine twelve, an ordinance amending ordinance thirteen twelve, authorizing a contract with Perfection Group Incorporated and declaring an emergency, introduced by Christine Nyslin.
Mr. President, I'm not familiar that we were going to be reading this for the first reading tonight. This is for our Perfection Group, for our energy, energy efficiency improvements to the community center.
Okay.
We've discussed this in, we did it several times.
Yep.
Or about two weeks ago.
Just snuck up on.
Okay.
Member Nyslin.
Thank you very much. All right. And what this is doing is increasing the amount to four hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars. And the previous amount had been four hundred fifty thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars. We're also increasing a section of it from forty-four thousand dollars to forty-seven thousand dollars in the Capital Improvements Fund.
First reading? Just standing on.
I guess not.
Nope. So, ordinance twenty-nine twelve was read for the first time. I'm sorry. No, thank you. We're going to move on to the, for a resolution for first reading. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Member Nyslin.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do this, we accept the money and rates by the county budget commission, and we do this every year. And this allows us to get our share of the property taxes that are within the city. And last October, the council accepted an amount of eight hundred three thousand five hundred forty-two dollars, and that was what they were basing the revenues on. And we have a revised estimate now that increases that amount by one thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars. So we need to pass this ordinance in order for us to be able to get our share of the property taxes that are within the city limits.
And then we have a one-reading resolution. Resolution in support, in support of abolishing corporate constitutional rights and creating a truly representative democracy, introduced by all council members. It was brought to us by member Reisner, so I'm going to ask him to speak to it.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
We've been discussing this resolution about every meeting since January, January fourth. I really don't have much more to add on it. I think it's pretty clear that there's a lot of support, I think overwhelming support really, for this resolution among the community here in Athens, the state of Ohio at large, and members of this council. So I would like to see it.
Before we vote on this, could you just mention additional language that you did add toward the end?
Okay. There were some suggestions in the committee, the whole, to perhaps make the conclusions a little more stronger and a little more to the point. So, in the official wording now, we now, it says we now herefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Athens. Section one and two are pretty much what were in the original draft. Section three asks the clerk of council to hereby direct, to forward a copy of this resolution to the following. And at this point, we have the, our two state senators listed by name, and the state of Ohio's congressional delegation to the United States Congress, represented by all members of our congressional delegation by name, to act in pursuant to Article Five of the United States Constitution to propose to the legislatures of the fifty states for the approval of such a constitutional amendment as forementioned. Section four, the resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment, permitted by law upon the passage and approval by the mayor. So I believe that's.
Thank you.
Pretty much what we discussed in committee.
So you've made a motion, and we've had several seconds. Member Gosnig, I believe? Okay.
For those of you who haven't been watching Stephen Colbert lately, he pointed out a few days ago that the super PACs that have had a role in this Republican presidential election so far have spent over a hundred and thirty million dollars. And half of that, sixty-seven million, has come from twenty-two individuals. So what this resolution does is opposes that type of takeover of democracy by certain wealthy corporations and individuals in this country voicing our concern as a city in the direction that we're headed after the Supreme Court decision on this. So it's pretty astounding numbers when you think about it.
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting this resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Resolution is adopted. We have a resolution for first reading. This resolution is a three-reading resolution. Resolution one twelve. Excuse me? Did I miss one? No, I don't have? Okay, I guess we have one that I've missed. Okay. Ordinance twenty-nine twelve, an ordinance amending ordinance thirteen twelve, authorizing a contract with Perfection Group Incorporated and declaring an emergency, introduced by Christine Nyslin.
Mr. President, I'm not familiar that we were going to be reading this for the first reading tonight. This is for our Perfection Group, for our energy, energy efficiency improvements to the community center.
Okay.
We've discussed this in, we did it several times.
Yep.
Or about two weeks ago.
Just snuck up on.
Okay.
Member Nyslin.
Thank you very much. All right. And what this is doing is increasing the amount to four hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars. And the previous amount had been four hundred fifty thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars. We're also increasing a section of it from forty-four thousand dollars to forty-seven thousand dollars in the Capital Improvements Fund.
First reading? Just standing on.
I guess not.
Nope. So, ordinance twenty-nine twelve was read for the first time. I'm sorry. No, thank you. We're going to move on to the, for a resolution for first reading. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Member Nyslin.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do this, we accept the money and rates by the county budget commission, and we do this every year. And this allows us to get our share of the property taxes that are within the city. And last October, the council accepted an amount of eight hundred three thousand five hundred forty-two dollars, and that was what they were basing the revenues on. And we have a revised estimate now that increases that amount by one thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars. So we need to pass this ordinance in order for us to be able to get our share of the property taxes that are within the city limits.
Proceeding with our. Proceeding with our agenda, we have announcements and other business. I think the mayor has an announcement he wants to make about something happening tomorrow.
Town hall meeting.
Town hall meeting.
Mentioned early, but I'll remind you again. Six thirty.
Always.
Community center. Come one, come all.
Thank you.
I was just going to inquire about committee meetings.
We're getting, that's our very next thing out of my mouth, yes. And the next issue is committee meetings for next week. Anybody think they need a committee meeting? Member Paul?
Planning and development.
I'm guessing city service safety issues will be necessary.
City services, okay. Good old finance.
Good old finance.
Can we ever go without finance?
I'm going to ask our service safety director.
Well, I would like to state, and the law director, I believe, is finishing up the review of the wellhead protection draft provisions, and Alahu kind of championed this in his previous role. And if we're ready to proceed, I would have Mike Cooper here from the City County Health Department to do a presentation on that.
So should we put that on?
It's not necessary transportation. I didn't know if it would be a planning department versus city services. Council of the whole.
Okay. Any other? That's everybody? Okay. Okay. And now we move on to opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items and services not covered on the agenda. Remember, you have three minutes, and we have a new timing mechanism. You do? How's it work? But, is Scott back there? There's some flashing lights, I think. Do we know how that works?
You have three minutes, and then when it's green, you have three minutes. Then when it's in the middle in orange, that means half your time's gone. Then when it blinks red and annoys sounds, it means your time's up.
Red and an annoying sound. Anybody who wishes to speak?
Sir? Go ahead.
A. Balasoff, P. of Bucks, 2323, Athens, Ohio. I know that the service, or the law director has looked into the law, which I knew, and if the citizens had wanted to vote this out, that would set a precedent. We could challenge it to the Ohio Supreme Court. I mean, it's all about precedents, and we, and you yourself could challenge this. Running for your congressional race maybe looked good, and so that you've fought for the people of Athens on getting fluoride out of the water. Take on the Ohio Supreme Court and get this out of the water. I mean, if the citizens don't want it, we, how can we let a bunch of unelected bureaucrats tell us what to do? Which is what the EPA is, unelected bureaucrats. You guys have voted to condemn fracking in Athens, or, I'm not exactly sure what exactly you guys did, but condoning it, which is completely a great thing to do. It's an environmental hazard. I applaud you guys. But why are we still dealing with fluoridation? Water fluoridation is just as great a risk, and it'll affect all of us just the extent that fracking has and will continue to do. So I ask you guys to get up and condemn fluoridation, or we can challenge the, take it to the Supreme Court. There is a case to be said. I think you guys should introduce a bill where we can put it on the ballot, let the people vote for it. If the people vote it down, then the people don't want it, and we take it to the Supreme Court of Ohio. And I think that'll look pretty good for you, Law Director Lang. So thank you for your good time.
Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't, Mr. Alice, I thought you said, no, but you need to introduce yourself and an address, please.
Yes, my name is Charles Murray Rose. I live at Full Ridgeview Road. I'm a 24-year city letter carrier with U.S. Postal Service. I'm here as a concerned citizen tonight to thank council for implementing the carbon monoxide ordinance, which requires rental property owners that heat their units with natural gas to have carbon monoxide detectors installed by January 1st of this year. It is my understanding that failure to comply will result in a fine. This has been a four-year crusade of mine since March of 2008, when I first smelled the first gas leaks on my route. We have had a lot of close calls over the past four years with citizens being told to evacuate their homes and hide buildups of carbon monoxide in some residences. Thank you, President Sands, for saying to me that I was not only instrumental in getting Columbia Gas to cough up 1.2 million to replace over 17,000 feet of new gas lines, some of the old gas lines being installed as far back as the FDR administration. Also, thanks for saying that I was instrumental in getting the carbon monoxide ordinance passed into law. As I understand it, through Paul Eschenbacher out of the code office in a phone conversation I had with him a couple months ago, he told me there are between 4,500 and 5,000 units that now are required to have carbon monoxide detectors in them. Believe me, that's a lot of people that are safer now, be it students or townspeople. I had a acquaintance of mine in New York State, and she told me that, when I was telling her what all was going on down here with this business, that she can't believe that this hadn't been a ordinance years ago. She lives in midtown Manhattan, and she said that it's been on the books for years for rental property that heats with natural gas to have carbon monoxide detectors. When I'm on my route, I thank the workers from Newark and the red trucks with the silver letters, R and R Pipeline contracted by Columbia Gas. I thank them for making our neighborhoods safer. I'm sorry for the inconvenience and the traffic delays on East State Street and the digging up of property owners' lawns, but that's the reason why Columbia Gas is photographing so they'll get it looking like it did before they had to dig up the property. But I make no apologies for helping to make our neighborhoods safer. And thanks again, council, for the carbon monoxide detector ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Anybody else wish to speak for council? Yes. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Dan McCarthy at 9930 Montserrat Road, Millfield, and I do want to thank the council also for sharing with us the information about the dire consequences of pushing back against the wisdom of our all-knowing government in the state. I think it's the reason why there may not be a strong interest in getting hexafluorosilic acid out of the water is a lack of understanding about the health effects that are resulting and have resulted for 50 years or more to people who unfortunately, accidentally, because they perhaps drink a lot of water because they're working very hard during the summer, might get, in other words, signs of fluorosis. You may know people, you yourself may have the blotches, the white spots on the teeth, which are the external signs of fluorosis. I would also recommend that anyone who has a thyroid problem would avoid drinking tap water because this exacerbates the problem. Someone's nodding their head over here. So think thyroid, also osteoporosis. It does exist of getting osteoporosis, and if you don't believe me, you must do your own research. And as the law director said, admitted, he doesn't know the science. He could learn the science if he wanted to. So it's really about a desire to know the facts of a very toxic chemical. Now, this is a result of the crushing power of government, and they're not going to stop here. They're also thinking about adding lithium to the water. And if you don't know what lithium is, it's used to calm mental patients. And this was first, it was first found out in Japan that naturally occurring lithium, they seem to have a lower rate of suicide in Japan, and usually you know Japan has a high rate of suicide. So they're thinking about adding it throughout, in all the water supply, and they're also considering doing it here. I don't know if it'll happen, but this is, when you give government unlimited power and you keep saying, well, there's nothing you can do, nothing you can do, nothing you can do, then why should they stop with hexafluorosilic acid? Why not lithium? So this is just emblematic, and it's really about education. It's really not about changing the law. We've basically been told that you cannot change the law, because, believe me, people have been trying to get the state to change laws for a long time.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir?
Hello, my name is Katie O'Neill. I live on 18 Euclid Drive. It's my first city council meeting, and I just wanted to call, come up here and say thank you. My father is Judge William O'Neill, who's running for Supreme Court of Ohio, and he's been working on campaign reform for 20 years now, and this is his alma mater here in Athens, OU. And so it pleases him greatly that you are writing this letter to all the representatives. Through Citizens United, we all learned how important our judicial branch is, and so this year I hope we are able to elect William O'Neill to Supreme Court of Ohio for the Democrats have lost the last 11 elections. So please be mindful, and thank you again.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Sir?
I'm Dan Waller from 155 Morris Avenue, and I'm here again, public health concern. Adding fluoride to our water supply is a very, you know, serious concern of mine, as most of you know. Recent research in the last five years, as the other Dan just explained, has come out, and, I mean, it's terrible for your nervous system, especially children, especially the elderly, I mean, serious bone problems. And the thing that really bothers me is there's the original exemption vote in the '60s, which Athens citizens voted no, we don't want it in our water. Then again in '69, the vote came up again, the citizens voted no again. It came up in the '70s, the citizens overwhelmingly voted no to add fluoride to water supply. Now we fast forward to the early 2000s, late '90s, then our city council on a lame duck session puts it in in a four to three vote. No citizen input, no nothing. I mean, we just have a democracy triumph here against the corporations, but our own city council, I mean, directly in the record went against the wishes of the people over three votes over like 50 years' time. So how is that democracy? And now we're being told we can't get it out? That's unreal. You completely went against citizens of your own city. I mean, and also like to say to Mr. Lang here is that Lancaster, Ohio does not fluoridate their water. Their last census information from 2010, they have over 38,000 people there, and they were in the same exact position as us. They were in the original exemption votes in the '60s and '70s, and then when our city council voted it in without even putting it on the ballot, their city council said, you know, the science is on both sides, we're not sure, let's give it to the people. Went on the ballot in 2004 November, Lancaster voted it down. That's what we should have done. It's just unbelievable that the city council voted it in, and now you're telling us there's nothing we can do. How is that democracy? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lois Whaley, and I live at 14 Oak Street. I want to congratulate city council, and thank you very much for the passage of the resolution that you just recently passed, introduced by Jeff Reisner, and I think we looked at it pretty carefully, didn't we? You folks did, I know. And this is a historic occasion. John isn't here, is he? John? Oh, there's John. Okay. Well, I'll sit down. I want John to, and some of the other people from democracy over corporations, to come up and thank you as well, and say that it's a big step for Ohio, I think. I think we're the first city in Ohio to take such a resolution about trying to roll back Citizens United decision of the Supreme Court. Thank you.
All the members, if you were nominated to speak.
My name is John Howell, 7745 Clark Chapel Road, Athens, and I too want to thank you and congratulate you for taking this action. I think it is, as Lois Whaley said, a historic event, but you know, it's a seemingly small step for a small community to take in a battle this big, but it's one we cannot afford to lose in the long run if we want a country that's a democracy in the way we understand it. We cannot afford to give our children a world that's run by the corporate bottom line. It's unsatisfactory, and the statement that you have made in joining people across the country to this end is a strong one, and will give all of us who are working hard in this endeavor encouragement to take this message further on to people throughout the state, throughout our local area, and throughout the country to make a difference. So thanks very much.
Do we have other audience members who would like to speak? If not, we're going to adjourn.
No, we have an executive session.
I'm sorry. No, we haven't. The audience can leave, but the council gets to stay for an executive session, speaking about collective bargaining. So it is 8:34. How about, let's aim at 8:45 to have the chamber clear. We are adjourned. Oh, I forget that part. I'm sorry.
I motion that we have an executive committee meeting for collective bargaining with the mayor, service safety director, the auditor, all members of council, and the president.
And the human resource director.
And the human resource director.
Okay. And we need a vote?
Aye.
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 Okay. Jim, you don't have to vote.